I always like your timing, Nick. So it is 6:00 PM and I am going to call the city council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance? Okay, both Councilwoman Diamond and Councilman Cock have asked to be excused tonight, so we can do that if there is no objection. Perfect. Moving into roll call, Councilwoman Loy?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca?
Present.
Moving into the approval of the agenda with a couple of things. First, adding an executive session tonight, and the other is adding a proclamation and moving it up above the presentation. So if there's no questions or concerns, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Burns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving into consent agenda, items one through seven, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Henderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right. So I have a proclamation that I was going to read tonight. This is a proclamation recognizing June 17th as Seroptimus International Obsidial Woolly Seroptimus Day. Whereas Seroptimus International Obsidial Woolly chartered on June 17th, 1949, making this year their 75th anniversary, and whereas the name Seroptimus is a coined word meaning best for women, and whereas Seroptimus Club Obsidial Woolly are dedicated to projects that improve the lives of women and children in the city of Sedgell Woolly throughout the United States and around the world, and whereas Seroptimus Club Obsidial Woolly currently helps support Helping Hands Food Bank and Rascal Rodeo, and whereas the Seroptimus Club Obsidial Woolly initiated the building of the Sedgell Woolly Community Center and donated funds towards the building of Hammer Heritage Square, the downtown gathering place for our citizens and friends, and whereas Seroptimus Live Your Dream Program awards cash to qualifying women who are head of households and who work to increase their economic earning power through education, this year they selected two local awardees. Whereas Seroptimus Club Obsidial Woolly provides scholarships to the Sedgell Woolly High School graduates. Now I, therefore, Julia Johnson, Mayor of Sedgell Woolly, do hereby proclaim June 17th, 2024, as Seroptimus International Obsidial Woolly Seroptimus Day, and encourage all residents to join them on Saturday, June 15th, at the gazebo in Hammer Heritage Square to initiate the club officers for the 2024-2025 year and to help celebrate their Diamond Jubilee. Congratulations. Okay, and then tonight we also have a special guest from the Skagit County Interlocal Drug Enforcement Unit. We have Skagit County Sheriff's Department Chief Tobin Meyer. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your time this evening. I really appreciate getting a chance to be in front of you again and just appreciate the time. The presentation I'm going to provide tonight is normally about a 30-minute presentation. I'm going to try to condense that down to 20 minutes or less. We'll see how I do. So I'm going to talk a little bit fast and breeze through a couple of things before we get going. I just want to make that clear that I'll talk a little bit fast today, but we want to get through this. So the presentation tonight is really all about talking about the good work of the Drug Task Force in the 2023 calendar year. We produce a very comprehensive annual report each year, and we want to get that out in front of the public as much as we can to demystify a little bit about what the Drug Task Force does and all the good work that they're doing. It just takes us a little bit of time to do that because of the nature of the work, let things adjudicate and dust settle and all that kind of stuff. So here I am in the middle of 2024, giving our 2023 presentation, and really my part in this is to manage budgets and policies and procedures. The yeoman's work is really being done by our detectives and special agents assigned to the task force. So hats off to them, and a lot of the credit from this goes to our very small team of dedicated detectives and special agents at the Drug Task Force. So as we get into this, next slide, please. I'm going to talk a little bit about the team. Just for the benefit of those who maybe aren't familiar with the team, I'll breeze through that real quick. I've provided that presentation before a little bit. I'm going to talk about a couple of recent highlights. I'm going to breeze through a couple of those things fairly quickly. I want to talk about our current trends and data from 2023, just to paint a picture about what we're seeing here in Skagit County and the region, and then a little bit about looking ahead to 2024 and beyond with the Drug Task Force. Next slide, please. So real quick, Drug Task Force was established in 1987 by interlocal agreements. Sedgell Woolly is a party to that agreement, and we are your Drug Task Force. We're a part of the community in terms of the enforcement side, and especially when it comes to the drug epidemic we're all experiencing here in the state and in the region and the county. We have local and federal participation. We primarily focus on mid-to-upper level drug trafficking organizations, and secondary to that, we focus on local neighborhood, community level issues where we have that specialized expertise to come in and handle things that are a little bit more complex and need a little bit more time and attention than what maybe a patrol officer or a detective may have time to do, a standard detective may have time to do. Next slide, please. So these are just some of our local participating agencies, including the Sedgell Woolly Police Department. Our staffing consists of myself as a part-time commander, a full-time sergeant, full-time office manager, full-time undercover detectives and special agents, and an outstanding part-time senior deputy prosecuting attorney who's been with us for almost 30 years. She is the magic and what makes this all happen and getting good prosecutions and in her head wrapping up these immense investigations and be able to prosecute those. Next slide, please. These are our federal partners, our key federal partners, FBI, DEA, Homeland Security, and we do work with other federal agencies, but the three there are really our key partners, and that's what lets us work these cases up into that mid-to-upper level range, even the transnational range. We really want to work these cases up as high as we can get to and have the largest impact we can, the biggest bang for the buck, and they're the ones that make that happen. So they are key to making Skadu what it is today. Next slide, please. Drug task forces are really high-risk, high liability, and making sure we have good oversight is key to that success. And really, our primary oversight comes from our executive board made up of all of our police chiefs and sheriff here in Skagit County, and that's what links us to you and that accountability component. So we do quarterly meetings. We report our activities to our executive board, and they provide some guidance in terms of what's important to their community and what we can do to help in that regard. We also undergo a biannual, very in-depth peer review with a team of about five to eight people that come in, and they're subject matter experts, looking at our policies and our procedures, our financial systems, and how we're doing business to make sure we are at the top-tier level, doing good work. And our last peer review audit came back outstanding and actually helped our peer review team that came in develop new model policies and procedures based on how we're doing business here in Skagit County. So that's a little proud point for us and very happy with that. Next slide, please. So when I talk about mid-to-upper level drug trafficking organizations, this is what I'm talking about. So the Sinaloa Cartel is providing all of the drugs coming into Skagit County. They are our number-one supplier. Most of the drugs are earning through California and Arizona and then up through our I-5 corridor and some other corridors into our region. And so our aim is to start pulling on a string here at a local level, pull on that string long enough to make sure that we work what's important here at our local level, but also start to work the cases up into this mid-to-upper level. So once we get into that mid-to-upper level, we start working with our federal partners to make this case as big and impactful as we can. And now we're to the point where some of our cases are resulting in our federal partners reaching down into Mexico, extraditing out, and we're getting good prosecutions here in the United States on those individuals. So we're really trying to work up to that highest level that we can. Next slide, please. So what do those seizures look like for us here at the local and regional level? These are all mid-to-upper level drug trafficking seizures, and please keep in mind that these photos are a snapshot of what's occurring at any given time out of some of our stash houses and supply houses here in the county and in the region. Just for context, the picture on the right, that's about 550,000 counterfeit fentanyl pills. About 70% of those are lethal or continue lethal dose of fentanyl. There's pure powder fentanyl there, I think about 22 pounds of meth, and $250,000 worth of cash and guns and all the rest of it that come with that. Next slide, please. Again, I talked about those special investigations, those community, you know, the things that are having ongoing impact on the community. You probably recognize that particular photo, and I'll talk about that case on the next slide very briefly. Okay, so I think I've covered this previously, so I won't go into too much depth here, but this is a really good collaboration between the Drug Task Force, the Sedgell Woolly Police Department, Chief McElrath and his team, where we all were able to come together on a problem here in the community that was generating a lot of calls, I think around 508 calls in a three-year time period, 84 calls just in 2023 mid-year. So the calls ranged from everything from drug overdoses to prostitution to vehicle thefts, and this was just becoming a problem. This was out of multiple rooms at this motel. And so our Drug Task Force was able to go in, conduct some undercover operations, do drug buys, and it culminated in a search warrant and a large team effort to execute that search warrant on multiple rooms of this motel, and at the end of the day resulted in a number of arrests, eight arrests, and seizure of fentanyl pills, and then it didn't stop there on the arrests. We wanted to make sure that we really addressed the community, ongoing community safety concern with this thing. So we worked with the public health officials to come in, swab the rooms, determine if the motel was even safe to inhabit. It wasn't. All swabs came back positive for unsafe levels of methamphetamine in the rooms. They were not habitable, and as a result, that facility was evacuated and shut down. So those are the types of things we like to do on a collaborative, local-level scale, and this was just an outstanding collaboration with Chief McElrath and his team and our task force. Next slide, please. I'll cover this very, very quickly. This is sort of a mid-level case that we worked. This is Pastor Steve Parker. He was attempting to help folks who had alcohol and substance issues, and that was his front. That's what he was claiming he was doing. While on the side, he maintained a premises for distributing large amounts of drugs. And so our detectives got word of that through our informant network, and we started to do our surveillance and our buys, and eventually we were able to do a traffic stop here in Skagit County with him where we were able to seize a large amount of fentanyl, methamphetamine, and stolen firearms, and then executed a search warrant on his two premises. I should say he had two houses, so this is just a tale of like a Jekyll and Hyde type thing. He had a wife and mother-in-law at one house, and he had a girlfriend at the other one, and was in the middle of distributing large amounts of drugs to Snohomish, Skagit, and Waukam Counties, basically most of the region up here. He was sentenced to 54 months in prison. I just found out yesterday that he got out on graduated reentry after just a few months in prison, so we're working through that. It's just a little bit gut-wrenching knowing the type of activity he was up to, so we'll follow up on that with Department of Corrections. Next slide, please. This is, I won't go into depth on this one either, but this is more just to paint a picture that we do have human trafficking happening here in Skagit County. This was a case in point out of Burlington. We helped King County with an investigation that they started to pull the thread on and found a fairly large, organized network of human sex trafficking. Two facilities here in Skagit County were part of that investigation. Through our undercover investigation, evidence collection, we were able to build a really good case and help with that overall investigation that really spanned multiple counties across the state of Washington. And really, one of the proud things on this investigation had to do with our partnerships, especially with FBI and HSI, who have specialists that focus on human trafficking and working with victims and having those resources and knowledge and frankly, language capabilities to help these victims on the day of the search warrant when we went in and shut this operation down. We were able to provide those services while also managing the criminal investigation part of this. So just to highlight that it's here and it is happening, and we have our unique capabilities to help support those types of investigations here as they arise. Next slide, please. Told you I'd go fast. And so last case highlight, and again, these are just a sample of the good work that the task force did throughout the year, but I just wanted to kind of touch on the different things that this task force is able to do. Really, a wide array of really good work done by the task force in '23. This particular investigation, we started, I think, in May of 2023, and really, really good work, really good partnership with our federal partners in this one that did eventually reach down to the transnational level, but this is about where our task force took it to. So after a long, I forget how many, six months investigation on this one, we conducted multiple buys and surveillance operations, just a lot of time and effort put into this, working with our other task force partners in the region, too. We eventually were able to determine where the stash house was for this operation, found that was an apartment complex in Everett, and applied for a search warrant. That search warrant was granted, went in with the team, and inside of the house, we found what you see there, 500,000 counterfeit pills, 22 pounds of methamphetamine, six pounds of cocaine, a pound of heroin, a pound of fentanyl powder, six firearms, and that 250,000 in cash. What really drove it home for all of us that touched this case was a child that was found in the house. The bottom-left-hand photo there is how the drugs were found, out in the open, child roaming this particular apartment. And more than that, Canine Sully there you see on the right was helping us with our search. Canine Sully was searching this particular area, so came to a fentanyl overdose, and thankfully, the handler was able to get some Narcan administered, revived Sully, transported him over to that clinic, and made a full recovery. But that's the same apartment complex this child was in. We were able to take custody, protect custody of the child, turn him over to CPS, and this is not uncommon for us. We see these things throughout our investigations, and it's a little alarming, but it just drives home the point that there are so many lives that are touched by this, and a lot of them are innocent lives, frankly. All right, next slide. So the theme for 2023, I'm kind of pulling back to that 30,000-foot level, was really developing great partnerships and really proud of all of the partnerships we've built over the last four or five years, but in particular, our partnership with Homeland Security. They have been a phenomenal partner for us here in Skagit County, and we have leveraged that to the benefit of all of our communities we serve. And in turn, they have recognized that outstanding partnership, and they awarded us Task Force Partnership of the Year. HSI Special Agent in Charge, Robert Hammer, oversees all of the western states. This is a large area. This is Idaho, Washington, Oregon, Alaska, Hawaii, and out of all of those areas, our task force was recognized as Partner of the Year. So we're very proud of that. That was pretty cool to go down and be a part of that. In addition, HIDA is sort of the gold standard, or the major leagues, as it were, for task forces. So we were able, after a multi-year process, working with them, developing that relationship, in 2023 became a HIDA task force. That raises the bar for us. It also opens up a lot of new opportunities in terms of funding sources, training, equipment, and partnerships. So very, very happy with that. And HIDA has a really robust public health side as well. So they use data from our task forces to inform the public health side, and then they have experts that reach out to the public health community to try to develop where resources should go and make some decisions and help develop kind of a common operating picture of what the region's looking like and all that. And then lastly, we partnered with 24 law enforcement agencies across the state and across the nation in 2023, and that just was all leveraged for the benefit of our community and public safety here in the state, here in our community, in the nation, and it was just a great, outstanding year for us. Very, very proud of that. Next slide. So we'll get into the stats real quick, and we're nearly to the end here. So in 2023, we had 61 investigations, 18 individuals charged, state and federally, over 500 pounds of drug seized, and 74 firearm seized for our little task force. That is some good work. Our fentanyl seizures continue to increase. We're seeing an exponential and alarming increase in pure powder fentanyl. That 550,000 number, that's how many potentially lethal doses of fentanyl we diverted from going into the community last year. Street prices continue to stay low. In fact, they're the lowest in the nation right now. We see pill prices at anywhere between about a dollar and $2 here in our region. Even on the east side of the state, that price will go up to maybe $10, and then outside the state, maybe $20, and some parts of the nation are saying $100 a pill. So we're at about a dollar. So if that talks to you about saturation and, you know, how much fentanyl we have here in our region, that's a pretty good indicator for us. Some good news, so I think it was USA Today reported last week that overdoses across the nation have dropped for the first time during this epidemic. The East Coast led us, in terms of the fentanyl epidemic, they were about two, three, four years ahead of us, and then we saw fentanyl, so maybe that trend will work its way west as well. We'll see. Sinaloa says publicly, it was in the New York Times and Washington Post, "No more fentanyl. We're out of the fentanyl business. We're gonna, we won't do pills anymore. Anybody who does, we'll deal with." So I think I'll take that with a grain of salt, but some of our intel is indicating that we are seeing pill supplies dropping, but in turn, we're seeing powder supplies increase. And then the last thing, all of our task forces across the state right now are just kind of holding our breath on the xylazine issues. If you're not familiar with that, it's a horse tranquilizer. Narcan and Loxone does not reverse a xylazine overdose. It's usually used as an adulterant or an additive to fentanyl, meth, and other drugs. It is a death sentence if you get addicted to this. It is not good. And I think one of the reasons we haven't really seen it take hold here is because of that, just that alarm and public education outreach that's been done to educate on the impacts of xylazine once you get addicted to it. We aren't seeing that added through the cartels. We're usually seeing that added locally and regionally, so it's mailed in, added to whatever supply is here, and then distributed out to the community. So that's usually the route it takes. All right, next. Oh, and I guess the picture on the right, if you want to go back just real quick, the picture on the right, that's one of our task force detectives. That's what pure powder fentanyl looks like. When it comes in, it's pressed into a brick. We have a little spectrograph device that lets us determine what it is, and that's fentanyl powder. That's what it looks like. All right, next slide. And there are some of the numbers. So note, methamphetamine in that dark blue on the left is that dark blue bar. That is still a dominant drug here in Skagit County. Cocaine remains steady. Heroin, we just don't see a lot of it, but we still see it. And then fentanyl powder is the one that we're watching. That's sort of that neon-green color. Nothing there in '21, a little bit in '22, a lot more in '23, and we expect that trend to continue. Fentanyl pill seized, again, '21 through '23. Last year, we seized around 550,000 pills. This year, I'm sorry, 2023, we seized about 820,000 in that ballpark. So we're still seeing that increase, and hopefully that'll level off starting in the next year or two, and a lot of task forces are anticipating that here in our state. Next slide. All right, looking ahead, so funding, we've talked about funding previously, but state funding dried up for us through the State Department of Commerce. Our normal funding mechanism was the Burn, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. That dried up. State has diverted that to other programs, and so through a lot of local support, and I think this group in particular, and all of our city councils, city councils and Board of County Commissioners, really came to the rescue for us, and through that pressure, the Governor's Office, I think, was compelled to provide some funding for the task forces for this year, and then we're working with legislature, hopefully to introduce something that'll make that more permanent moving forward. Local communities are providing the bulk of the funding to the Drug Task Forces through salary and benefits and all those things. Every investigation we work has a state-level impact, and the state certainly has a part to play in that. So we're hopeful there, and we'll continue that effort. Staffing continues to be a challenge for us. We're working with our executive board that has been extremely supportive of our task force, and we, none of us are immune to the staffing challenges in law enforcement, but as long as we have a little bit of funding, a little bit of staffing, we will continue to work hard to keep our community safe and have an impact where we can. And with that, last slide. Thank you very much, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do. It's incredible. Are there any questions or comments for Chief Meyer?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That's really incredible work. I got to view your last year's report from the crowd, and I was actually very impressed with what you did. I just had one question about your local agency partners, STPD, who is that?
That's a great point. I meant to mention that earlier. So that's Snohomish Tribal PD.
Okay.
We're very fortunate to have support of our reservation folks as well as our municipalities. They're one of the hardest-hit communities, frankly, with the fentanyl epidemic, and so we're happy to provide that support to them, and they are a signing member to the interlocal agreement with us, which is, again, just an outstanding show of support for a non-tribal law enforcement entity to be able to work with a tribal law enforcement entity like that.
Thank you. And then, so one more, if you don't mind. So in your future funding that you're looking at, would you be able to come back and go over some options of how us as a municipality can help and budget in the future to make sure that we keep our operation going?
Absolutely. The Sedgell Woolly has been a phenomenal partner for us, and we will certainly leverage, support wherever we can get it, especially at the state level to try to help decision-makers understand just how important drug task forces are to communities like ours to keep that effort going.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
I got one quick question.
Sir?
Do you get the feeling that you're winning the war or catching up a little bit or falling behind? What do you think, your personal?
That's a great question. I think that, you know, there's some that will say the war on drugs has failed, and I won't necessarily argue against that point. What I will tell you is our philosophy has changed amongst all the Drug Task Forces in terms of how we're approaching this. I see task forces as a key component to providing data, if nothing else, the pointy end of the spear of knowing what's coming into our region, and being able to support all of our partners in this fight on this epidemic, to be able to decide where resources need to go, give advance notice to our health officials to provide education on trends. I'll give an example. Three months before rainbow-colored fentanyl appeared here, they're called Skittles. I don't know if I've talked to this group about that before, but they were really marketed to kids. That was the intent. And we- And, and we, through our intelligence network, there was a distribution point in California that really was tied back to us. We knew that, that rainbow-colored fentanyl was going to be here three months before it got here. So, we're able to raise those alarms sooner, get, get our education component mobilized, and hopefully getting the word out that this is coming. So, that's a part of it. The other part of it is, there's been this paradigm shift in how we do business. Historically, it's been kind of a whack-a-mole. We'll take down an organization locally or regionally, whack, right? Another one pops right back up. The paradigm shift is, is that we're, we're really starting to leverage our federal partners a lot better. And there's a, there's a national campaign that is now pushing that. That's from the White House, throughout the federal entities, that are all partnered with us. And that is to work together, to, to work these up to a transnational level and have the biggest impact we can. And I think we are starting to have an impact. You know, the fact that Sinaloa came out and publicly said, okay, no more fentanyl. We're going to be done with that. I think that, that's, it's starting to speak volumes. And I think some of this is working. Like we, like I said, xylazine has not taken hold, and I think a part of that has been the education component and, and understanding, you know, where it's at in the community, and how much is there, and there's not a lot there, and certain things are working. I think that's, that's where the value's at right now with the task forces, if that makes sense and answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank you for, for coming in and doing the presentation again. It's always, it's always a treat to have you come in and share that information. It's also very alarming. It's alarming for the community and, and to see the rise in the amount of fentanyl and other drugs, but it's definitely fentanyl. It's not going to adults. It's not going to go to just a few people in the backwoods of our community. It's, it's embedded. It's in our schools. It's in our streets, and it's something we got to take serious, and it just puts it out on the forefront. You were talking about that gentleman who was living the double life, got arrested. He had stolen weapons on him. He, at his residence, he had many guns, some stolen. And then he also had an enormous amount of paraphernalia and, and drugs. And yet, he only did a couple of months? Is it correct?
Yeah, so, we're seeing this graduated reentry program having some impact on a few of our cases, and this was one example. He's, he's back out. He was sentenced to 54 months, was back out. If I had a magic wand and I could make some legislation, I would, I would argue that anybody that distributes fentanyl is at the caliber of attempted murder, in my opinion. And I think that's how we should look at it. And other states have, have passed legislation, Idaho just passed legislation, that, that is, is making it a severe offense, where things like that aren't going to happen, right? So, and I've got more severe cases than that, that are even more alarming. I can't share them with you, but, but it, it's a, becoming a regular occurrence for us, and there needs to start, start to be a dialogue around, around dealing fentanyl and how, what the severity should be on that.
Yeah. When I was in school, I heard stories about people getting arrested and put in jail for a few years, 18, 19, for selling 20 bags of marijuana. Years. And they're, they're children, and their, their lives are ripped out from them. And then to hear people that can do this and be out in months, it's alarming. And I just, I'm curious on, where do we fall down on that? I mean, there's, there's a system in place, and we're, we're holding people for years in certain cases that maybe don't have that severity of crime, and yet, we're letting people who are, are basically decimating communities and families back out on the street. How, how did we get there?
I, I think, I think our legislation is always catching up with trends, and I think we're just a little bit behind on this particular trend. And I think we can do a little bit better on, on working with our state legislators to pass laws, meaningful laws, on, on fentanyl production and distribution in our communities. I think those, those, those laws are still catching up, and I think we'd do a lot better there if we can, if, if, if we can convince our, our, our state representatives to, to start to move in that direction.
Well, if you want to write a letter in those cases to us and send it, I would be more than willing to sign it, my own self, and I'm sure other council members in other communities would more than willing to sign this and send it back to our representative saying this is not cool. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Yes, go ahead, John. Thank you. I just wanted to thank you and your team for all of your hard work. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks.
I want to thank you as well. I know that your team takes great risks in doing this, so I, I have appreciation for them. And I have a question that's a little outside your jurisdiction, but I hope you can help me, since the DA is probably not going to come tell me. Last we talked, the China, lots of the precursor drugs were coming from China. They were being shipped to the Mexican drug cartels usually, put together there and shipped up here. Is that still the case?
Still the case.
Have you seen anything at the federal level where they're trying to do something about cutting that off?
Yes, so, there, I'm trying to be careful a little bit, but yes, there are things that are being done, and I think that from a national policy level, working as much as we can, working with China on this particular subject has had some success, but it, it hasn't cut off the supply completely. But, but there's, there are things that are being done, and, and I think we'll, we'll start to see a little bit more success at that, at that level, between, you know, in terms of, you know, the, the precursors coming into Mexico, and, and then what that, what that'll look like moving forward. So, yes, I, I have some hope, and, and I hope to be able to share a little bit more with you at some point on, on some of that, so.
I understand having to be careful what you share with us, but I appreciate you letting us know. I was just more curious if it's still coming from the same place or not.
It is, yeah.
It seems like it all is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you again, Chief Meyer, for coming, taking time, educating us. It's, it's impactful, and I think all of us have been impacted in one way or another by the drugs that are out there. So, all I could think about where you were talking was the amount of lives that have been saved, and, because I know how many have already been lost to it. And gosh, it's, it's incredible. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay. That was very sobering. So, moving on then to city administrator report. Charlie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Moving on to counsel. Councilman Loy?
Just a quick little deal. We've been working on our skateboard competition for August, and it's coming around. And Alan and Nick have, have signed on to be part of the group on game day, so they'll be the linemen on the game day, so. But it's coming around. Second of all, I went, in fact, Joe went, and you went to that North Star meeting last night. It's kind of interesting, so it was well worth my time.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Kesty?
Okay, I wrote it out. It's easier to do it that way. I just wanted to speak a bit about our last council workshop. When I had originally voted to add this workshop back, it was under the idea that we would be having an extra meeting to discuss city-related business. Rather than a workshop discussion, what I sat through was a lecture of one person's view and definitions on homelessness, offering no solutions but more handouts, and what I took as a slap to our police force, saying they should be kinder and not just be moving people along. I for one applaud our police and what they do to keep our town safe. I would like to see us focus on proactive measures, hand-ups instead of handouts, and offer funding to entities who hold those receiving the monies accountable. I think there is a huge disconnect in what I hear the majority of councils saying they'd like to look into, and what keeps being brought forward to us. We, as a council, have talked about housing vouchers and helping keep those people one paycheck away from losing their house, staying in their homes. We've asked to hear other ideas for tax 1406, but instead, we're brought back the exact same offer we heard before. The administration is wanting to take us one way, and we're voicing another. My point is, you have a majority of council ready and willing to work to get things done, and the lack, the lecture that I sat through, and what we keep being brought, in my opinion, is why cities like Portland and Seattle are in the situation they find themselves in now, and where Mount Vernon and Burlington are heading towards with that same mindset. Our community needs a different, our community needs are different, and we do not need the one-size-fits-all approach.
All right. Councilman Henderson?
Chief, you made it back just in time. So, speeding continues to be an issue on Township Ferry and a lot of the other, a lot of the other speedways. I keep getting complaints from my neighbors all the time, so I'm just bringing that up.
Appreciate it.
I had the pleasure of attending Blast from the Past this past weekend, and it was a blast. The weather was perfect, great events going on, great music, car show. It was incredible. There'll also be another car show at the end of the month to kick off Lager Rodeo, for any of you interested in attending. I also came across a news story the other day that was very troubling and very close by, from Island Transit, Island County Transit. Massive, massive upper management corruption that led to the firing of their, of their CEO. And that's just a reminder to all of us public servants to be diligent in our represent, representation of our taxpayers and the management of public funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Appreciate everyone who put on Blast from the Past, car shows, everything that Monique did. It was really fantastic to see the community come out and enjoy themselves. As Kevin, or Councilman Loy said, we attended North Star event last night, where they outlined some of the things they've been working on. It was good to hear the dialogue, them asking us what we were concerned about and what we wanted to see them doing, kind of brainstorming at each table. I enjoyed doing that and hearing what other councils were thinking about. Something else I was curious about, now that we have a planning director lined up, I'm hoping that we might start seeing the list of building permits and the current activity once he gets up to speed. I would really appreciate that. I get questions from the community often about items, and that made it really easy to, to look and see what was going on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Labaka?
Awesome. Thank you very much. So, yeah, the Blast from the Past was awesome. I did hear a little bit about maybe possible better advertising, some people wanted to join in, and they normally do, but they just didn't even know that it was happening until they ended up driving through town, and they had their weekend planned. So, it'd be great to have like a place to put some, a banner or some advertising that's off the side of the road, on a main road somewhere, so it's always good. I've been asked a few times, and so I just wanted to get it out there with the grant program, which I think ended up being a pretty good success. It was very good success. The intent on that was to have it for businesses that had shops forward-facing to the public. There, there got to be a little bit of confusion about what happened with one business, and so, what type lies. And I, I just want to make it clear that I think the intent was businesses that, that ran a business downtown, and maybe they do out of that building, but it was for those businesses. And so, I've been questioned like, how did you, why did you sign this? Why did you get this in? I just wanted to make it clear that I didn't know that there was an intent there for businesses that were running out of downtown, or within the central business district that were forward-facing. So, besides that, we've been doing really good with the, the Parks and Rec Circuit, and so people are really excited about it. And I've joined the Truck for Treasure in our community, and so that was really cool to just see so many people out enjoying the parks and trails. And so, that's going to be, that's going to be awesome. So, looking forward to it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. First off, yeah, the North Star meeting last night, the combined dinner council meeting was, was excellent. There was a lot of discussion about the options that we have regarding homelessness and funding for those who need recovery and those who are children and, and elderly, and the special needs that are there, and how they've kind of been missed in our society. So, it was a very, very good meeting, and we continue to move forward, and there's just more things that are happening, and I'll share as that happens. I met with Family Promise today. We were talking about the Community Block Grant for the Family Promise House. They're moving forward with that. You're going to be hearing more about that. We'll bring that before you, probably in the next month or so. Also, I want to remind everybody about, now you saw it today already, but the Seraptimus Diamond Celebration, 75 years, that they have been serving Sejuul Wali, which is amazing, fantastic. Thank you very much. And June 15th, this Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Hammer Heritage Square, they're going to be swearing in their new officers, and there'll be a celebration for their diamond event. And it sounds like there'll be some snacks and things like that for people, so it's going to be a fun time. So, I hope you'll make it out, 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. And then the last is, and I was so glad to hear it, yeah, I wanted to thank Executive Director Monique Brigham from the chamber, but especially her staff as well, and all the volunteers who helped with the Blast from the Past. It was an excellent turnout, and it was a beautiful day and very successful. So, thank you, everybody, for that, for participating in that. Okay, we are going to be moving on now to public comment. It is 6:44. I will open it up. Is there anybody in the chamber? Nobody signed up for it, but is there anybody in the chamber who may want to give public comment? If so, please keep it to three minutes, and if you could give your name and kind of how you're affiliated with Sejuul Wali, that'd be great. Is there anybody in the chamber here? Okay. Seeing none, is there anybody online? And Woody, I have to tell you, I can't see who might be online.
We have two individuals. Anybody attended remotely, just raise your hand, and I will unmute your mic.
Seeing none, we will move on then. I will close public comment. It is 6:45. We are now going to have public hearing, and the public hearing tonight is going to be on the 2025, 2036-year Transportation Improvement Program. This is a first read, so there will be no action taken tonight. And kind of the way that this will go is that we'll have Mr. Freiberger talk about the program, then I'll open it up to the public for any kind of comments. And as I close that, I will open it up then to the council so that they may ask questions and make comments, and then I will close the public hearing, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Woody has a slide deck up there. He's putting up now. So, go ahead to the second one. This is the annual effort that we do to update our six-year Transportation Improvement For any projects that we do on arterial streets within the city that will utilize federal or most state funding, we have to participate in the, the regional and the statewide Transportation Improvement Program process. We prepare our local tip, and then we submit that to the Council of Governments. It's due this year by the end of July. They incorporate that in the regional tip and submit that to the state, where it's finally approved. Projects that are included in the tip that are, that have federal funding or anticipate having federal funding are then eligible for that funding. As I mentioned, it applies for streets that are federally functionally classified. That's our, our larger-volume streets like Metcalf and State Street, and the State routes and things like that. A public hearing is required. This is that hearing for, tonight, and that will fulfill that requirement. The six-year tip covers the years 2025 to 2030. As you've seen in the past with these, I generally also look out an additional 14 years for a total 20-year window. Your picket didn't, or your packet did not include the, the out years, but it will be provided with the minutes from tonight, and will be available for the second read. That is something that's just done for illustration purposes. It's not part of the actual adopted tip, but it's good to look at that from the aspect of a 20-year view of our transportation plan. The primary focus for the next six years, thank you, Woody, for doing that, will be funding and completing critical transportation projects related to anticipated traffic growth over the next 20 years. Some of those projects, and this is not exhaustive, the Jones-John Liner Trail Road Corridor projects, which you've heard me presenting on quite a bit over the years. In particular, in the six-year tip, we have projects, priorities 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12. I'll show you the list in just a minute. And some of those projects include, priority one is the SR9 Township Street and John Liner-McGargill Township Street and, uh, John Liner McGargle Intersection Project, which is under design right now and will construct in 2025. Um, the second priority is, uh, the SR20 Cascade Trail West Extension Phase 2A, Holcamp to Hodgins. That project's been in design for several years now. David Lee has been designing that in-house. And we have that slated for construction, uh, in, now in 2025. It was originally supposed to go this year, as was the intersection project, but right-of-way has delayed those projects a little bit and, and so now it looks like 2025. Uh, the third priority is the North Trail Road, uh, Cook Road to North Bucko Estates Boundary. Uh, that project is in final design. That one's actually being designed and built, uh, by, uh, the Buckwood Estates Partnership that's doing the, uh, development off of FNS Grade Road. Uh, the city is participating in the cost of that project under our development agreement. It's a very important project, uh, for the city. Another part of the corridor projects. And then, uh, priority five is the Jones John Liner BNSF Railroad Undercrossing and Roadway Extension Project, Phase 2. Uh, this will be a follow-on to actually putting the bridge itself in, which we're working with BNSF currently to do that. Um, you'll see an amendment coming to their agreement that we've had in place for some years, uh, to, uh, fund the design for the final construction of the bridge for which they drove the piles a couple of years ago. And then, uh, priority six is the John Liner Road Reed to Township Bicycle Pedestrian Projects and the related project seven, John Liner Road Arterial Improvements Projects. The design phase has been obligated for, uh, both of those projects. Uh, we are in the process of selecting a consultant for, uh, the arterial part of that. And that'll come back to you in the not-too-distant future, uh, as Bill completes that project, uh, process. And, uh, we'll move forward with the, uh, design on that. Next slide, please. The secondary focus for the next six years is maintenance of existing arterial streets by our overlay program. We typically budget about $100,000 a year from the transportation benefit funds, uh, to, uh, support that program. We use those funds, uh, about half for the overlay projects themselves and about half for match for larger projects. Uh, this particular year, we're using those funds primarily for the, um, uh, the overlay projects on, on, um, Reed Street, uh, which you approved for, um, award at the last council meeting. And in fact, they had the, uh, pre-construction corri- uh, meeting for that project this week. Uh, for next year, which the tip addresses, it is priorities number four, which is the Township Street Overlay Project Phase 1 and priority, uh, 10, which is Township Overlay Project Phase 2. Uh, those will cover basically the entire, uh, length of, of Township from SR20 down to Dunlop, uh, when those are, are finished. Uh, the third focus of the tip is on the update of ADA ramps and sidewalks citywide in cor- in conformance with the American, with Disabilities Act and our own city's adopted ADA transition plan. Um, we typically do these ramp projects in association with planned roadway projects. And this year is, is certainly a good example of that. Uh, the 2024 pavement and pedestrian facilities projects has, uh, numerous, uh, schedules with that, in that, uh, including two full block replacements of sidewalks. And I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 ramps that are being, uh, gonna be upgraded. And then quite a few, uh, sidewalk panels that were identified in our survey we did in association with a grinding project we've already completed. So, that's a, a really good thing that's happening, uh, with that program right now and, and is fulfilling council's desire to, uh, get ahead of that and not just put all that burden on the adjacent property owners. Next slide, please. So, this particular slide is from the Raze Grant application that we submitted for the Jones John Liner Trail Road, uh, projects. And you can see on this, uh, the golden rod, uh, lines on there are the five components that are included in the Raze application, which we should be hearing about, uh, in the end of June. Uh, and then the other blue sections are ones that we've already funded, uh, and are in design on, including the one, uh, down on the lower left that is crossing the Bucko property that I just mentioned. And is to the right, uh, over towards SR9 are the John Liner Road Projects, the path and then the arterial project. And the circle there at the intersection is the Intersection Improvements Project. It's the roundabout project. Next slide, please. And this one is, uh, from the tip. It shows, uh, the previous year's tip that just shows the arterial projects on state routes. Next slide, please. This one shows, uh, the arterial projects within the city other than the state. And then the final slide, please, is a combination of those two. These are all projects that are eligible for the tip. And those were in your packet. Next slide, please. Just a few highlights on changes from this year's tip from last year's. Um, the completed projects were, uh, or will be completed by the end of this year. We're, uh, starting those next week. Uh, these are all part of the 2024 Pavement and Pedestrian Project. Uh, the Reed Street Overlay Project from SR20 to John Liner. And then the Reed Street Project from John Liner, uh, on Joan Liner from, uh, excuse me, from John Liner up to SAP Road. Those are both scheduled and, and underway. And then we also have the Portobello Overlay included in that from Fruitdale to East Gateway Heights Loop. Uh, additions and deletions, uh, one I wanted to point out in particular, uh, we've had some, uh, requests from the public, uh, to look at connecting the sidewalks, uh, on Klinger Street and, uh, the new Bucko subdivision down to the existing sidewalks at Murrow Street on FNS Grade Road. And we do, uh, anticipate and we already do see some school-aged childrens walking down, uh, the shoulders of those streets, uh, in the mornings and in the evenings. And really, there's no safe facilities for those right now. So, I have added that, uh, project onto the tip. I have it down the road a little bit because we have some other higher priorities. But this will allow Bill and, and staff to start looking at, uh, getting that project, uh, preliminarily, uh, laid out and get an estimate on it and start seeking funding for that. Uh, in fact, we may look at doing a, a TIB application this year for the section from Murrow up to the new Bucko Street, which is a fairly short one and, and should be quite fundable. But anyway, uh, we are looking ahead to solve those projects where we become aware of them in town. In the tip, uh, we've also moved the date for the next phase of the Cascade Trail Extension Project, um, up a little bit. Uh, it was, uh, has been moved now from the longer-range tip into this six-year tip for what we're calling, uh, Phase 2C. And then some other projects that I've noted there that moved also from the longer-range tip into this one just because of the, uh, fact that they, another year has passed. Next slide, please. I won't go to any detail on this, but, uh, we also have moved some projects around, uh, the corridor projects in particular, uh, with the revised construction ass- estimates we did for the Raze application and the anticipated construction year. So, many of those projects have shifted by a year or two and some a little bit more. But they're all in the six-year tip. And as I mentioned before, uh, the John Liner McGaragul and Township Intersection moved from 24 to 25. And any other revisions are mostly related to updated engineers' estimates and that kind of thing, as, as I mentioned on the Raze grant. And the overlay projects, we update those estimates yearly, you're looking at, uh, costs that have been, um, found on previous year's projects. There were 19 projects totaled in the 23 to 28 tip, and there are 20 projects this year, fairly consistent. Next slide, please. And on the 20, uh, 20, uh, 2031 to 2046 thing, this slide just shows some of the additions and moving around of things on that. Uh, in summary, down to bottom of the page, uh, the total for 2029 to 24, 2045, it was 36 projects and now it's 39. Next slide, please. So, our funding sources for transportation projects consist of several sources. Uh, on the local end, uh, the motor vehicle fuel tax, uh, which in 2023 was budgeted at 243,000. It's gonna be slightly more for 24 and 25. Uh, general fund, uh, we, uh, budgeted from property taxes and sale taxes and those things, uh, about $600,000. And then real estate excise taxes, about 125,000 per year, uh, was, was budgeted for Fund 103. Uh, for arterial projects, uh, real estate excise taxes, again, about 700,000 are budgeted per year for that. Uh, Transportation Benefit District, which I spoke about a little while ago, uh, 2023 is budgeted 210, 2024 the same, and 2025 the same. And then GMA Impact Fee Fund, uh, 314, uh, for 23 through 25 is budgeted at 61,000. Uh, the funding that comes in for REIT and, uh, from impact fees is highly sensitive to, um, real estate and the general economy. Uh, they've been coming in pretty good. Uh, we're at the, uh, Transportation Benefit District Funds were about 50% right now. And that, that one's pretty steady because it's based on vehicle tabs. Uh, but we're already well over 90,000 on impact fees for the year. And the REIT, uh, funds are about 40% at this point as well of what the budget is. So, those are looking, uh, good right now. Uh, typical grant sources, the Transportation Improvement Board has been a big partner for us. We've done over $25 million in grant-funded projects, uh, through TIB in the past and will continue to, uh, rely on that program. Uh, the, uh, federal funds through SCOG, uh, have been a big source of funds for us. And then, uh, we're hoping for the Raze program, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. This is too small to read here, but you have it in your packet to look at it in detail. This is the, uh, listing of the 2030 to 2025 to 36-year tip projects. And, um, that, uh, is basically what we talked about, uh, the, the more predominant ones on a few minutes ago. Um, that's really all I wanted to present to you tonight. There's some other things in the packet that, uh, we can talk about individually if you would like to do so. Uh, so again, tonight is a first read. Uh, this will come back again to you, uh, for a second read. Uh, and, um, we would hope for action at the meeting on the 26th. And I'd be glad to take your questions if you have any.
Well, I'm gonna open it up first to the, uh,
Oh, thank you.
To the public, yeah. So, um, is there anybody within the chamber or online? If online, please raise your hand if you would like to make comment regarding, uh, the transportation, Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Okay. Seeing none, then I will turn it back over to the council. And the council, then, any questions or any comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. And thank you, Mark, for all the hard work you put into this. Traffic is a very complex issue. Um, so, uh, I'm just looking at this on the 2020, uh, the six-year plan. And do you think it is sufficient for the growth that we are experiencing and the growth that, uh, you know, we have a local business that, in full disclosure, I work for, but I've never discussed any traffic or politics with, uh, any of them. But it's still, you know, it's on everybody who's hiring on there's heart, right? We're bringing in 40 people and new hires almost every other week. Uh, we're building another site and then another site in Hamilton, looking at more buildings down here in Seidra Woolley, um, shortly, because it's become very successful. And it's not for their own success, but it's necessary for infrastructure and even in certain cases, our defense. So, it's, it's not a matter of like, oh, could we do this? But we're being very strongly encouraged to, like, hey, we really need you guys to do, to grow like this because you're, you're good at what you do, which is a big, huge kudos to Seidra Woolley and the blessing here that it's housed here and that it's, it's founded here, which is amazing. A local family did that. So, it's wonderful, but there's some substantial growth. And we're running everybody on the north end. And it's running all through 20 and it's going down more. I'm not sure when the Jones John Liner will be done, but at that, they wouldn't be able to turn on it till 9:00 or sometimes Fruitendale, but you gotta go up a bit and then over. I foresee backups as far as Fruitendale and even beyond, and especially school time with that kind of, uh, increase, um, you know, over the next year, two years, three years. And then also, we're not utilizing our other artillery, which is Minkler and a Jameson. And that's taking people down to the south side, which is also going to Mount Vernon, Clear Lake, I-5, heading south. Um, we're just running everybody on the north side. And it's concerning because already people are discouraged by the traffic load. And so I'm just wondering, is, is, are we putting, are we pulling Jameson's left on this? Are we looking for ways to work with the state and the county on fixing Minkler? People have already died on that road numerous times. It needs a turn lane. It needs to be softened on that turn so people can get on it. And it would be a low-hanging fruit to fix that to me on artillery versus waiting for the Jones John Liner, which isn't gonna alleviate the problem. I mean, everybody still gets to get to the north end before they can even turn on to it. And it's only handling the north side.
Well, you've asked a lot of things
Yep.
In your statement there. I'll try to address the ones that I, I think are, are, uh, most germane. Uh, the transportation plan itself, uh, is designed to allow for growth. Um, it looks for a 20-year growth. And, uh, the project that you've already pointed out that is the most important one for dealing with the current spat of growth we've got is the Jones John Liner Corridor Project. And I think we've been doing about everything we can do at this point. We have it, uh, you know, to the preliminary design stage. Uh, we've applied for federal funding. We think we have a very strong, uh, application this year. And we hope that, uh, this federal government agrees with that and funds it. Uh, if they do fund it, then we are set up to design those projects in 2025 and 26, uh, procure, secure the right-of-way, and then build them in, uh, over 27, 28, and 29. So, it's not immediate, but it's about as fast as you can go on a major project like that. And there's, there's simply no way we could build that project. You know, it's about a $32 million project for those five golden, um, lines that I showed you on the drawing, uh, earlier. Um, and that, there's just no way we could handle that on our own. And, and then the growth, of course, as you mentioned, is not internal necessarily. It's actually through growth. So, it is in the interest of the state and the federal government to help us with that. Uh, and, and indeed, they should. Uh, so, that's, that's the strategy of the, of the Transportation Improvement Program. That's what it's meant to do, is deal with growth. Um, it's something that we do look at periodically. Uh, are, are numbers correct that we've used projections? And we're right now in the midst of the comprehensive plan update. And we have hired TSI, uh, who's done our modeling since we did the 2016, um, work, uh, the EIS for the Swift Center, which we were at that time anticipating some of the growth from SEDRON would happen up there. That's now moved. Uh, but the growth is still affecting us because of the success of Janicki Industries in Hamilton. So, we think the numbers are probably okay, but we are actively looking at those. And, uh, and I'm sure Bill will be reporting back to you on that later this year as we get those studies in hand and we see, uh, have we been aggressive enough on this? I, I don't know how, how we could have done it much faster than we have. Uh, the council's been very supportive on doing the necessary things to make that project move along, like buying the right-of-way we did over the last two years. That has been huge. And I really give kudos to the council for, uh, your forward thinking on that. That's, that's how we make these things happen. And they, when we have such an investment in a project like that, as we do, that makes us look, uh, pretty attractive to the funding agencies. So, your second question was, uh, regarding some of the particular intersections like Minkler. Uh, that was mentioned here a couple of meetings ago. And I did approach the county engineer about that. Uh, we've had some back and forth on that. They have told me they have no plans for the intersection themselves, uh, that it is a state route and that is, that is who should be dealing with it. Um, and I've looked into that with the state some. We need to do more to see if they have any particular plans. Uh, what I found is that while, um, photos, photo evidence would indicate that there's a lot of near misses at that accident, there aren't actually any reportable accidents that I've seen, uh, in the records up through the end of last, last year, uh, which was surprising to me. But, uh, Forrest Jones, uh, the County Transportation Manager, sent me some, uh, photos in the intersection that pretty clearly, uh, many, show many, many long skid lines coming into that from both directions. So, there's been some definite close calls on it. And I think it's a good one to, for us to keep talking to, uh, the state about. But again, we have no control over that particular part of the system other than, uh, reminding them of their duty, uh, to deal with the traffic that coming down the road is their duty to deal with the traffic that coming down the road as well. So I hope I answered your question.
So we're not, yeah, and I do appreciate that. So we're not able to really get with them, press the issue, show them. Now, I remember driving up there and there being a serious car accident, rollover, two people in it. One person was already deceased, the other person deceased in the, he was one of our managers at the time, in his arms. So I know people have died on that road right at that point, at that intersection.
Do you remember the timeline on that?
That was, it was in May 21st, because it was right by my birthday in 2000, and I want to say 14.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll look into the
The accident data covers a three-year period?
Okay.
So that one would have, would have been outside of that.
That's probably why, yeah. But yeah, definitely a lot of near misses in that area. I've known people that roll their vehicle when they trying to turn in there because so much traffic, and then they turn and they can't correct, and they roll their vehicles over the edge, things like that. So it seems like a low-hanging fruit. The cost would be low to fix. Maybe if we look at a way to support that in a way, or find out if we can partner with them, work with them, it would be a lot less than other avenues by, by correcting that or at least adding in a turn lane.
Well, through our membership in the Council of Governments, we, we'll, we'll carry that forward, that discussion. We really, that's outside of our jurisdiction, so I wouldn't think we'd have a fiduciary participation in that. In fact, I wouldn't recommend it because we've got our hands pretty full as it is. But I do think continuing to encourage the state to look at that carefully, to make some improvements is appropriate for us to do. And Bill is here, so
Nice.
He's heard you, and, and we will talk about it more.
Yeah, I do appreciate that. One of the things is that it's not inside of our jurisdiction, Bill, so it's not really our concern. What happens east is, you know, of, of another county or another city's concerns, and I've heard that before, but we are a main route for all that growth. So all those houses that are being developed up there, all those businesses, any sub-businesses that will be related to supporting growth and businesses up there, increased school load, all that will travel through the Seadrill Woolley facility. So until we get a bridge maybe in Lehman, that would be awesome.
Councilman Lloyd?
I don't know what the council's schedule is, so I'd like to take this opportunity to say aloha, happy sailings, and thanks for stopping by.
Well, you'll get one more shot at me on the 26th. I'll come back and give you the
Well, I won't be nice, then.
Okay.
And along those lines, so we are doing an open house for him, and you should have received an invitation in your email. It's June 26th, so it's our next council meeting, and it's from 3:00 to 4:30. So I would love to see you here if you want to come.
So aloha anyhow. Second is a comment is, you were talking about Edward R. Merle putting aside, that would be huge because you get down to Bucko and every, all the kids can go straight into Klinger from there. So that's a big deal. Then I got a couple of questions quick. How long do overlays last in the, in the roundabout by Cascade Middle School? Is that going to be concrete or blacktop?
It'll be blacktop. That's the way we designed that one, or designing it. Concrete tends to last longer than, than asphalt, but asphalt's much easier to repair. So we, we built the, the concrete intersections, or the concrete intersection at, at Ferry Street and, and Cook, which is already showing some distress, and it's not going to fail by any means, but I think the asphalt's a better approach for us with the traffic volumes we're seeing on these routes, so.
Okay. Councilwoman Diamond, Cassidy? I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. I was thinking the same thing as Mr. Lloyd here, because you always give us such a thorough response to anything. You, you know everything that we ask, and I'm going to miss that, and I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, if there are no more questions, then we will move on to unfinished business. And the first item up is the 2024 Budget Amendment Number Two, Ordinance Number 2076-24, and this is a second read. Kelly?
Yes, good evening, council. So this, as the mayor pointed out, this is the second read of the 2024 Budget Amendment Number Two. The 2023-2024 biennial budget was adopted by council in late 2022. We passed a biennial update, or mid-biennial update in February of this year. We had a first read in a public hearing of this ordinance on May 22nd, so this is the second read. You'll see a familiar format as the first read. We've included the budget in a couple of different forms. The first one is the ordinance itself, setting the new budget, so as budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures, and the projected excess and deficit of that. So just the difference between the revenues and expenditures. We've also included a memo in there just to show the cash balances that will be affected by those revenues and expenditures. So it shows our actual beginning cash in each fund, and then the new budgeted revenues, new budgeted expenditures, and our projected ending cash. The third thing we've shown in there is the 2024 Proposed Budget Changes. This is the big detail of the budget. It shows the original budget, which is our, by original, it means the current budget, and then our proposed changes and the differences. So when you look at that document and you see a lot of zeros going down in the, in the difference columns, it means we haven't changed a whole lot, but anywhere you see a difference, something in the difference column, that's, that's where we've made a change. Based on a question at our first read, we've also included the year-to-date budget to actuals as of June 6th. And the amount, just to note, the amount in there that says amount budgeted is the currently approved budget, so that's our 2024 Budget Amendment Number One. Those numbers, since we haven't approved this budget yet, it'll include what is currently adopted. Did want to point out some changes that we've made to the budget from our current budget. The general fund, we did include the part-time human resource analyst position approved by council. The general fund, we've also made a couple of other changes in there as well to revenues. We've made adjustments to building review fees, GMA impact fees to schools, which is just a pass-through to the school district, and we've updated the investment interest, all based on year-to-date, just to get better estimates year-to-date. We've also made some adjustments, as I said, in the salaries for an HR analyst position, and then some other minor updates. We already made our annual payment to the jail, so we adjusted that to actuals. We did a fire truck exhaust, adjusted that to our actual expenditures for the year as well. As I mentioned, the school impact fees, we, we collect that money in the general fund and disperse it right out. So we increase the revenue we expect to get in, so we increase the expenditure we expect to bring out to the school district, and also increased expenditures for our Department of Emergency Management to continue paying into that system. So those were the, the highlights from the general fund. The other fund that we made changes on is Fund 104, the arterial streets, and this is just updating the project list a little, just a small portion of some, some of the stuff Mark, Mark went over, but just for 2024. So we updated those for actual projects, as well as had to update some of the funds where, how, how that fund gets funded. So we had to update the Fund 301, 302, 304, and 314. These are the real estate excise tax funds, Transportation Benefit District, and the Transportation Impact Fee Reserve. So that's where we're building up funds throughout the years and then spend them on these projects. So when we updated the arterial street fund, we also had to update how we pulled from, from those funds. We also made some very small changes in the streets fund and the stormwater fund, just to account for employee retirement and the retirement cash out that impacted those funds. So now that's a lot of information, but I'm open to any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Kelly? Joe?
Actually, I was just going to thank you, Kelly, for highlighting, dating, and putting down who made the changes. That made it much easier to go back over and not have to read the entire thing line by line.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, Kelly, you brought up the school impact fees, and so we collect those, and then we pay them directly to the school district?
Yes, so along with the other building and planning fees that we collect and we keep, we collect it for the school district, and those fees we remit straight to the school district. So the revenue you'll see in the, in the general fund, it's, I think, we've adjusted it to $125,000. You'll see that exact same expenditure of 125. We might not, our actuals might not exactly match that because we tend to collect it and then remit it once a quarter, so the timing isn't always, makes them, the actuals line up, but that's how it runs.
So, so we send that money to the school district at a quarterly interval?
Correct.
Okay. And how much time are we spending administratively, counting the money, getting it prepped to send and send over? And is it, are we being reimbursed by the school district for managing those funds for them for, upon each quarter?
I don't believe we're being reimbursed by the school district. Generally, and Tom may have further understanding of this, it's my understanding that in building and planning, they set the permitting fees in I-Works, and it's, it's, it's a series of fees. So generally, the school impact fees is one of many, many fees, so it just gets incorporated into that number. The, you know, the builder comes in and pays with one check. So from a finance perspective, other than remitting the funds to the school district once a quarter, it doesn't have a lot of overhead costs for us, but I'm not sure if it has a bigger impact on building, on the building and planning's end of it.
All right, yeah, we've, can you hear me? We've not had that discussion internally yet, but I did make a note to follow up with you on it.
If I could, just one more. Who, who sets those impact fees for the school district? Does the school district set them, or do we set them in our planning department?
They're included in our master fee schedule.
Yeah, the, the school district sets those fees. They actually do studies periodically to, to determine their needs. Just, just as I talked about the TIP, they do that. They look at their facilities' needs, and they determine how much of a growth impact there is, and that's where those fees come from.
And so since we're doing that quarterly interval of transferring the money while we're holding it, is there any interest that we can gain on that money while we're holding it?
I would say that we haven't calculated that, but it's just part of our general pot of money, so we would, in a very small way, get a small interest in that money, but not very much.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to move forward with the 2024 Budget Amendment Number Two, Ordinance Number 2076-24?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move forward with the annual budget amendment.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'm not sure who's
You owe me a Coke.
So have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and a second by Councilman Burns. It sounds like Henderson. Sounds like it was a tie there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. The first one is to amend the Seadrill Woolly Municipal Code, Section 8.05.070, the compost procurement reporting. This is Ordinance 2075-24, and this is a first read. And I believe, Nikki, are you going to cover this for us?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mayor. This is sort of a follow-up to last year's compost ordinance. I'm sure you all remember the conversations that we had about the original compost ordinance that we passed, which essentially encourages the use of compost in city projects. Last year's ordinance had a reporting requirement that started this December 31st. The legislature this last session made a couple of tweaks to the compost ordinance requirements. Now the reporting requirement will not be until March of next year, and will be annually thereafter. And there's also an additional requirement that the city report to ecology the facility or facilities used for processing the compost or organic materials that was diverted from the landfills. So those are the three very minor changes that came down from the legislature this year through House Bill, what was the House Bill? 20? House Bill, I seem to
2301, House Bill.
2301. And that House Bill is included in your packet. The part that is relevant to Seadrill Woolly, most of the, the bill does not apply, but the part that does apply is on page 24 of that bill. Again, this is a first read. If you have any questions, I would be happy to take them, but it is pretty minor changes that the legislature has passed this last session.
Are there any questions for Nikki at this time?
I would, I just don't understand, like, so the organics go into the landfill and they produce a methane that harms the environment. And so we don't put it in the landfill, but we put it in our compost gardens around the area, and it doesn't produce methane?
So the, the science behind it is something that the state has worked through. I certainly am not an expert on methane production. I understand the intent is to divert it from landfills and compost it in a manner that reduces the amount of methane that goes into the atmosphere, but I am not an expert.
It seems like having organics mixed with the landfill would help decompose the landfill product, but I'm not an expert either, so I don't really know. I do know that Mountain St. Helens went off, and that was a big, big carbon footprint. And, you know, honestly, I would say with any of these bills, and this isn't related, but the first thing they should do is ban private flights of very wealthy elites, like, you know, Taylor Swift, or, you know, Bill Gates or any of that. So nobody's starting there, so this is costing the taxpayer for larger areas, but like you said, it doesn't apply to us because we're not as big yet. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is a first read. It will come back to you in a couple of weeks. Moving on to second and last item of new business, which is the Contract 2021 PS02 Widener and Associates. This is Amendment Five and Task Order Four. And Mr. Freyberger?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more or less a housekeeping item for us. Could have been consent calendar, I guess. Widener and Associates is our environmental subconsultant or consultant who assisted us with the Homestead Park permitting. Part of that process, all along, we've known that we would have to do some wetland banking. What that basically means is if you impact wetlands in the state of Washington, you can mitigate them on-site and then have to modern, monitor that for 10 years or so, or you can buy into a wetland bank. We have one in Skagit County that is available for that purpose. We had an impact of about four tenths of an acre total for the new paths or in the southern part of the Homestead Park site, and for pipelines and things like that that are disturbing what is considered a wetland. So we're buying into the bank rather than trying to find an area and do a mitigation project and have to monitor project and have to monitor that forever. And the cost of the banking, plus the plans that Widener has to prepare for how the banking is done and how it's monitored and all the rest of that, is $53,546. And so there's two things here. Their agreement itself had a not-to-exceed amount, that this goes well beyond that. So we're extending the agreement total to 120,000, and then we're issuing a task order to actually do the wetland banking work, both the administrative engineering work and the cost of the wetland bank itself. So that's what this is, and I would appreciate your motion on that tonight, so we can move forward with getting that bank in place.
Very good. Any questions for Mark?
Kind of a curiosity. I was just wondering where the wetland bank was in Skagit.
It's somewhere down in the Francis Road area, if I understand it correctly, down along that portion of the area, the cricks down in there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one quick statement.
Sure.
Skagit County Parks did one of those wetland banks. You know, we had 10 acres up on College Way, and it still cost a couple hundred thousand bucks, but boy, that was way better than going through all the hoops.
So Mark is looking for a motion tonight. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion to sign contract 2021-PS-02, amending Amendment Five with Widener and Associates to increase the total agreement to 120,000.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Lavaca. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carries. So that is the end of our business. We do have an executive session. Yes.
There's a second motion needed on that one as well.
My apologies, Mark.
No problem.
So then there is a second one, to approve the Public Works Director to sign the contract. Do we have somebody who will make a motion regarding that?
Make a motion to approve our Public Works Department to, or Director, to sign the motion. That was just approved.
Second. Okay. Thank you. So a motion made by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie, and this is to approve authorization of the Public Works Director to sign contract 2021 PS02, Amendment Five with Widener and Associates to increase the total agreement to 120,000. Okay.
Actually, Mayor, what you read was the first agreement again. There's a second one down below. For the task order.
All right. So we're looking for a motion then to approve and authorize Public Works Director to sign contract 2021 PS02, Task Order Four, to prepare with the wetland banking plan and purchasing bank credits in the amount of 53,546. So that motion was made by Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Kestie, Councilwoman Kestie. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. So you're double good for the first one, and we're good for the second. How's that? All right. Thank you very much. And so we do have, added to the agenda, it was kind of last minute, but this is kind of important. Mr. Freyberger asked us if we could go into executive session. This is for property acquisition. Action may be taken afterwards. This falls under RCW 42301101C. And how long do you think we will need, Mr. Frey? 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Okay. All right. So it is 7:33. We will be back at 7:43.
Bill, do you want to come in too?
It looks like they're low.
We need the access over there.
What?
The mayor wanted to make an access over there, on the other side of the council dials.
She wants to make an access?
Yeah.
Oh, not a bad idea. I mean.
Yes, everyone doesn't have to like.
Oh, that's closed on that end?
On that end, it's closed.
Oh, I didn't realize.
I mean, you could probably jump it, but.
It's also easier to scatter. Is there something going on? That's what this highway's going to feel like right now. He's sitting there forever trying to go in it. It's just one chain of cars. If we had one stop.
Yeah.
And then it's the people who take pre right-hand turns and fill it up. They'll really pay him.
Yeah.
And the other way, some light. At the time, he was just writing a name with a Ross. But we also have, and he put an older pass originally that we're on. We have an older road. Hard to unhatch the stoplights. Keep moving.
Yeah, it's still, you know, it has to be after coming, that people are moving in the area.
You know, they do now. It's our, able to, you know, we sent 2,000 or 3 million around about, it's a cost of a bunch. It's our way here, but now we have to reduce it. It's wasted. You know, it only got by for a short period. He made more prominent the, uh, burger head.
Yeah, part of that is one of the, it's coming from federal.
Yeah. Federal is the taxpayers.
I know, but what I'm saying is that they got them from the federal, and we told them it's 10%.
The COVID money didn't spend. They need to go back.
Yeah, to something.
The mayor should not have ever been able to have it. He has no business. He has no, he's on a business. He has no business. He told you had to have a business, you know? If you owned a building, you did have business, but you couldn't get it. He had to have the business. Business owners had to apply for it.
That's why they don't have a business.
Well, the way that it worked out, I could, it's not a five-point mark. So the women are, so downtown businesses.
I see.
I don't, I'm being wanted. Someone could have done it. He owns the building, does all the business. The mayor should never be able to do it, or any city council member, be able to grant them for themselves.
It is 7:43, and I'm going to call this council meeting back into order. We are out of executive session, and action has and will be taken. So do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the warranty deed, real estate exercise tax, property voucher agreement, and right-of-entry document for acquisition of the property at 827 John Liner Road.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second for the acquisition at 827 John Liner Road. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Next motion?
I'd move to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the ALTA buyer settlement statement and escrow documents for the acquisition of the property at 827 John Liner Road in the amount of $510,000 plus closing costs.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson. Is there a second? Okay. And seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. This is to approve the ATL and, uh, the closing costs at 510, John Liner Road. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. And the last motion?
I'd also move to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the ALTA buyer settlement and escrow documents for the acquisition of the property at 900 Macargill Road in the amount of 383,179.99, including closing costs.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Lavaca, and this is to authorize Director of Public Works to sign the ALTA buyer settlement statement and escrow documents for the acquisition of the property at 900 Macargill Road. This is in the amount of 383,179.99, including closing costs. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. All right. All right. With that, next meeting is June 26. I want to remind everybody, from 3:00 to 4:30, we are going to have an open house for Mark. I hope to see you there. And anyway, you have a nice evening. We are adjourned.